This conference will now be recorded.
Hi, Bruce. How are you doing?
Good. How are you?
So, well, Lois, any business in this city or part of it?
The Ides of March.
Kevin?
Would you stand as able and pray with me as we have our invocation for this evening's meeting? Dear Lord and Father of all, we come to you this evening to ask your guidance as the Sedalia City Council, Mayor, Administrator, Staff and Members meet to make important decisions for the betterment of our community and its citizens. We are grateful for their service and they dedicate themselves to this community. We also ask for your protection of all of our first responders, police, fire, sheriff, ambulance, hospital staff, and all who work in health care, many risking their well-being to serve us. We are so thankful for the several vaccines now being administered throughout the area, which we hope will rid the world of the COVID-19 pandemic. Those who volunteer in this mission are so appreciated. Let us be mindful of the freedoms we enjoy and sometimes fake for granted in this constitutional republic for which so many fought and died to create and preserve a special blessing for all of our armed forces throughout the world. We also ask a special blessing for the Boy Scouts of America. They have done so much for community, for state, and for country. A special blessing for the Boy Scouts. And then, as we leave the chamber tonight, please protect us and our loved ones. Keep us from harm until we meet again. All this we ask in the name of your Son, our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Travis, if you can come on up and lead us through the flag, please.
Thank you for having us. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, Scott. Orlean, for help, please.
Lehman?
Here.
Oldham?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Bogus?
Here.
Richardson?
Here.
Croft?
Here.
Foster?
Here.
Here.
And Blitz?
Here.
Thank you, Orlean. Now, we have two public hearings tonight. We'll open the first one, just in relation to the commercial and industrial sewer rates, residential and commercial, how the city's water rates and presidential transfers. We'll open this public hearing. Anybody who wants to participate, please go forward, state your name, address, and state your piece. It appears that somebody is going to come forward. We'll close that public hearing. We're going to go to the second. This is all due to our proposed 2021-22 budget, city of Sedalia, Midtown and West 50 Tiff plans. John Henderson, if he comes forward, he needs to make a presentation. I pushed the end of that, John.
Thank you. I got ahead of myself, I look like, according to the screen. Each year, we do an annual report to you all on the activities of the both Tiff districts, the West 50 Tiff and the Midtown Commercial Tiff. I'll start with the West 50 Tiff. And what I'm going to do is provide you with information that we report to the State of Missouri at the annual report that's due to the state at the end of November. So, those are the current numbers that we have officially reported to the state. If you'll recall, on the West 50 Tiff, we did an amended agreement in 2019 with the developer, and since that time, Big O has been, their construction is complete and they're open for business. And you'll remember that Aspen Dental and Scooters have also opened prior years. We have remaining land to develop on the West 50 portion, as well as at the Winchester and 50 Highway portion. And the assessed valuation added to the redevelopment project as of last November, and I believe this is before we fold in Big O's numbers, is $242,270. And that's assessed valuation increase. On the Midtown Tiff, you'll recall that in July of 2018, we added the Lamy Building to the project. That project will be paid back from the revenues from the Lamy property only. And the street construction was a separate project with a sales tax agreement. The Trust Building has been completed as far as the Tiff development plan and is under construction by a private developer. The Broadway Arms demolition was completed in, I believe, 2017. The Streetscape Phase 3B is now complete. That wraps up most of the Streetscape elements. The Liberty Center contract has been signed. And to give you an overview on what the effect of that Tiff has done, as well as the Special Business District and our focus with the city on infrastructure downtown, we had new businesses this year in the Lamy Building, Tax Pro, the Oxhorn Restaurant, Number 5 Bistro and Bar, Josie Books and Records, Southern Maven, Habit, Permanent Cosmetics and Lash Lounge, and Gateway Mortgage. It's about 30 jobs in that building so far, give or take a few. And also in the district, the Art Room over here on Main Street is open. Boundary 324 and Event Center has opened. The Den, which used to be Chief's, new name, as well as Chances Are, which used to be Coaches. We have Jam and Nuggets Music on Ohio Street, Boom and Shiner Shop, Jeffrey Nelson Legal Office, Baker Legal, Bill and Heeny Law Office, New York Deli. It looks like they're gearing up to open up again. I saw some activity and some plants being planted at that business. And then, Allstate, Rebecca Davis opened her shop for Allstate over in the building with the Fitness Center, as well as the residences that the Frenell Companies built. Under construction, you have the Katy Trail Health Center. So, we're estimating with those jobs, about 60 new jobs in the downtown area over the course of those past year. Total to date in the Tiff district have been 220-plus new jobs. We've only had $3,700 in eats, and that's the sales tax. Hopefully, we'll see those numbers increase with the Lamy Building coming online this year and Katy Trail Health Center drawing people into downtown also. And the assessed valuation added to the district since its inception over 10 years ago is $2,650,000 and give or take a couple dollars. The pilots' payments in lieu of taxes have been $1.1 million on the project. So, that's the activity update for the both Tiffs. And if you have any questions, I'll take them down.
Anybody have any questions? John, thank you.
Thank you.
If we have no special board tonight, we're going to need a amendment, a council meeting with amendments, if it's approved or not.
Motion approved. Second.
And then, for the, uh, Attorney Vice, your questions.
Motion approved. Second.
Officer?
All right.
Thank you. Yeah, Public Safety, Charles Olden, please.
We have two items tonight. The first item is going to be a presentation from the Director of our Pettis County Joint Communications, Danielle Doughty.
Good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. I wanted to take a moment and update everyone on the status of the Pettis County Joint Communications project as a whole, as well as the budget for the project. As some of you may or may not be aware, the project actually started prior to this. It has been in process for quite some time. The preliminary budget presentation occurred with the Pettis County Commission in November of 2020, and it was presented to the Board Review in December of 2020, and confirmation by the Pettis County Auditor December 18th of 2020. And it was published for public review December 21st of 2020 and confirmed by the Pettis County Commission on January 4th of 2021. Regarding the project itself, in the third quarter of 2020, critical infrastructure, such as the technology required to produce the radio transmissions and the basic CAD infrastructure, begun with the oversight by the Advisory Board. It progressed through fourth quarter of 2020, adding myself as a component of that. And we began onboarding new employees, as well as working on the policy and procedures and working towards the merger of the Public Safety answering points that were currently operating within Pettis County. That would include the Sedalia Police Department, as well as Pettis County Sheriff's Office, Pettis County Sheriff's Office, just the communications unit. The first quarter of 2021, the training of the new hires began, and we are cross-training all of the current PSAP operators between the two variances between the agencies. We have an anticipated go-live date. We're presenting as second quarter of 2021. More than likely, that's going to be mid-quarter. I unfortunately do not have a hard live date yet. We are very dependent upon various vendors and providers of services to nail down a specific date. Regarding the budget, our revenue is estimated because we have transitioned from a traditional landline service tax to an any device fact, any device tax, which indicates that any active device within Pettis County will be charged $1 per month, and that will generate revenue specifically for the Communications Division. As we don't have five consecutive quarters of data to determine what the projected trends may be, it's estimated that it will be approximately $400,000. Our statewide prepaid tax is estimated to be approximately $40,000. Pettis County is providing $200,000. The City of Sedalia is providing $300,000, and Pettis County Ambulance District is providing $150,000. We have no interest to date. We do have a balance forward of $741,984 based upon previous revenues generated. We have been granted several grants, both at the federal and state level, that generates a total revenue of $2,237,142. Our expenditures are not firm. Due to the delay in merger between the Pettis County Joint Communication Center, the Sedalia Police Department, and the Pettis County Sheriff's Office Communications Unit, the expenditures are estimated because we were not paying salaries for the months of January and February. However, they were budgeted for the year to be $677,142. We are anticipating to come in under budget in that particular line item. We have new equipment purchases of $379,000, and that includes the critical infrastructure previously referenced, and it does include the IT expenses required to conduct that. Our lease agreement with Wood and Houston, as well as our Emergency Medical Director is included in our contractual services, as well as the lease agreement with the City of Sedalia.
What is the lease agreement with Wood and Houston?
The lease agreement with Wood and Houston is the Motorola contract, and it was nine years of $143,000. And that is the reimbursement of the radios and the radio system. So, our total expenditures were budgeted at $1,978,092. As budgeted, we will have a balance forward into 2022 of $259,049 without major changes to our budget, and none are anticipated to this point. That will also provide a balance forward into 2023 of $131,347. It should be noted that our revenue was reduced due to the delay in merger. The revenue will be reduced to $250,000 from the City of Sedalia and to $125,000 from the Pettis County Ambulance District. However, even with the revenue reduction, the known revenue reduction and the known expenditure reductions, right now, the salary estimate is to be $564,000. We are still anticipating to, in the year, in a positive note. Any questions?
So, currently, we'll discuss to the basement or salary concerns in Sedalia?
[inaudible]
Right.
[inaudible]
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 Yeah.
[inaudible]
[inaudible]
You know what works?
[inaudible]
Let me just try to get this highlight work.
You top hundred.
Yeah.
That's a little much, I'd say, with ketchup.
[inaudible]
So, if I have to do it another time?
Okay.
[inaudible]
I hope she brings you back to the root now.
I can.
Public Safety Control.
I feel like a little excitement on a Monday.
And I can see that.
I can remember we were in here in the last minute. Didn't bother us, somebody wouldn't be such like that for me.
I guess. Well, who knows?
Me.
That's a good one.
Joe, do we need to call back to order?
Uh, I mean, as a formality, yeah, I think either way, it would kind of just, you know, together, it was just a, just to take breaks.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, you can say, you're just saying the final statements. Are they yourself, is that true?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, you don't tell?
Yeah, yeah, especially with your presence here.
Yes, yes.
Let's call and say back to order. Is that, yes, that's the now, okay, thank you. Okay, any other, anybody have any questions to say now?
Can proceed to my second item? All right. Secondly, included in these strategic plans is the implementation of an unmanned aerial system, commonly known as a drone. This equipment will be quite useful in law enforcement as well as fire surveillance and other departments, and other departments that provide a bird's eye view of covering a wide area. Additionally, this equipment has infrared cameras that will be invaluable in showing things like hot pots in a fire or even possibly where a trapped citizen might be. In facility maintenance, we'll be able to get information such as potential roof failures. Chief Work has reviewed this technology and has put together a plan to purchase a significantly upgraded version than what was originally in the budget. He has also been able to secure donations and identified asset forfeiture funds to offset the increased costs. The staff recommends acceptance of the low bid from La Drones LLC for fifteen thousand nine hundred forty-five dollars and ninety-six cents.
Any questions?
Chief, do you have anything to add?
No, I've covered it. Ask for any questions. All right, would you read yours, please?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-nine. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a bid from an unmanned aerial system drone for the Soudaya Police Department.
Second reading?
Second. On paper.
Aye.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash twenty-nine. An ordinance authorizing the acceptance of a bid from an unmanned aerial system drone for the Soudaya Police Department.
Final passage?
Second. Roll call, please.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
All in favor?
That's all I had. Thank you, Thompson. I think we'd be appropriate to introduce our attorney in charge of that.
Okay.
Shannon, right?
Well, go ahead, you can do it.
Shannon, we can stand up and say hello to everybody. This is our first day on the job, so you can write a little narrative about this going into the basement. Oh, Tar Hei?
Yeah.
Anything else exciting happen today? We only need to hire about twenty more people.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for being aboard.
Yeah, well, every, every department head I introduced her to, she, they told her how many people they were trying to hire. So, she's, uh, she's, she's got a, got a list already going, so.
They're looking for a new mayor through the council.
Yeah.
Well, okay, Andrew, continue.
Uh, first item we have is a resolution in the ordinance. The resolution is in relation to increasing expenditures in the budget, uh, for fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one. And then the ordinance is authorizing amendment to that budget, uh, year, fiscal year twenty twenty through twenty twenty-one.
Any other questions? All right, would you agree to resolution, please?
Resolution number nineteen twenty-five. A resolution of the City Council of the City of Soudaya, Missouri, authorizing an increase in expenditures in the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Second reading.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Close? Thank you. You bring any, bring your ordinance to us?
Yes. Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty. An ordinance authorizing an amendment of the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty twenty-one.
Final passage, or second reading. I got confused, sorry.
Do we have a second for that?
Second.
Okay. All on paper?
Aye.
Close?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty. An ordinance authorizing an amendment of the budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-one.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
And Dawson?
Yes.
All in favor?
Second item we have is the proposed, uh, rates for residential, commercial, and industrial sewer, residential and commercial out, the, uh, city limits water, and residential trash and recycling fees outside of the city limits. It's four ordinances, uh, I don't know if you have anything you want to add, Mr. Fisher.
Uh, this was what our, our hearing was on earlier, uh, the, uh, the rates were published, uh, in accordance with, uh, I think it's thirty days that they have to be out. Um, so, uh, you know, nobody, including me, uh, likes the increased rates, but, um, most certainly for the sanitation and the sewer department, we've been, um, working with those for, for, uh, quite some time now, trying to get them to a break even, uh, to the point to where they can sustain the, uh, the ongoing equipment needs and the ongoing infrastructure is, uh, most particularly in the sanitation, uh, the sewer department. Um, so, uh, be happy to entertain any questions or, uh, I guess I could go through, uh, off the top of my head, the, the sewer rates went up by about five point five eight percent. Um, and the, uh, water department or the water rates, we only raised the outside of the city base rate, and that was at, uh, two times the inside the city limits rate, and now it's going to the two and a half times, which was, is consistent with what our sewer rates are. Um, and then, uh, the, uh, the solid waste disposable, disposal went up by three dollars, uh, and that's taken it from its current fifteen dollar a rate, fifteen dollars for the, uh, majority of the residential customers to, uh, eighteen dollars, which, uh, happens to be very consistent with, um, uh, with, what the local rates are, uh, for the private enterprise businesses. And, um, and on top of that, we do the, the bulky waste, the, the cleans we pick up and include in that. So, uh, there is, uh, on the sanitation, on the, the solid waste, there is a, uh, discount for, uh, elderly discount, and then there's, uh, uh, also some other fees for additional cards and those kinds of things. The majority of the folks are going to pay eighteen dollars.
Any other discussion from the council, questions? All right, read your orders, please.
Okay, the first ordinance is on the sewer user charge. Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one. An ordinance submitting section sixty dash two nineteen D of Article Five of Chapter Sixty of the Code of Ordinances relating to the sewer use charge system and incorporating said fees into the city's fee schedule.
Second reading.
Second. All on paper?
Aye.
Close?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-one. An ordinance submitting section sixty dash two nineteen D of Article Five of Chapter Sixty of the Code of Ordinances relating to the sewer use charge system and incorporating said fees into the city's fee schedule.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call, please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
No.
Okay, so that's seven yes and one no. The second one is relating to the, uh, fee schedule by increasing the water-based service rate. Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two. An ordinance submitting section sixty dash four oh one of the fee schedule by increasing the monthly water-based service rate.
Second reading.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Close?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-two. An ordinance submitting section sixty dash four oh one of the fee schedule by increasing the monthly water-based service rate.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Cross?
No.
Foster?
No.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
No.
Richardson?
Yes.
That's five yes and three no. The next one is for the solid waste collection. Bill number twenty dash twenty-one dash thirty-three. An ordinance submitting the fee schedule to increase residential solid waste collection fees.
Second reading.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Close?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-three. An ordinance submitting the fee schedule to increase residential solid waste collection fees.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
No.
Richardson?
Yes.
And Cross?
No.
So, that's six yes and two no. And the last one, uh, is on recycling fee for outside city limits. Bill number twenty dash, twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four. An ordinance submitting the fee schedule to increase the annual recycling fee for residents outside city limits.
Second reading.
Second.
Second. On paper?
Aye.
Close?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-four. An ordinance submitting the fee schedule to increase the annual recycling fee for residents outside city limits.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Yes.
That's all in favor.
Third item I have, Your Honor, is the adoption of the, uh, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two budget.
Yeah, uh, here is the, uh, spreadsheet again that we've gone through several times. There is some updates that I want to point out here at the bottom. There were a few items that, uh, we were trying to get done during this fiscal year. They were included in this fiscal year that, uh, that I've listed now down at the bottom of the, this spreadsheet. And essentially, uh, for example, the e-ticketing, that is something that, part of it is going to be, the, the actual hardware will be received by the end of the fiscal year, so it will be charged to this fiscal year. But the training and the, uh, uh, implementation costs will not be done until next fiscal year. So, what I've done is, is I've showed that as an addition to the, uh, expenditures during this year, and then, uh, over here in this column, uh, other, um, uh, effects on the fund balance. So, see, the, it'll, it'll reduce the beginning, or increase the beginning fund balance, uh, going into the year because we didn't spend it this year, um, and then add it to next year. So, in effect, also, we're really doing, it's rolling it over from one fiscal year to another. So, hopefully, I explained that well enough to... And then, um, uh, also, we have the opportunity, any of these items that you want to, want to make changes to or, or not, I mean, we can, we have one more shot. Um, basically, what, what we end, end this with is, is what you would be adopted in our budget. So, if you want, I mean, we can go through any of those, those again. Uh, transportation, I don't think there was anything there in the capital improvements, there were, again, were some things that we moved from one year to the next. So, we have the firing range and the third, third of Sixteenth Street Mill and Overlake, um, budget, so, sorry. Kelvin, Kelvin, where did we wind up with the cap play area? We kind of, we're playing around with that, and actually, we went out there to take a look, we weren't able to make any, we weren't, the three of us that went out there to look. Um, where are we at with that? At the... At this point, it's still not in the budget. Um, if, if, if you may, I, I recommend that at, at that rate, I think we add it to the budget, and we try to, try to figure out a way to, to, uh, uh, what, firm up the design, but I think we go ahead and add it and then... I think that's, that's kind of why we went out there, to see if we'd come up with a, we got to come up with a design before we get into the, the number, I think, so.
Yeah, I'm fine with that, as long as we make sure everybody understands, before we proceed, we've got to have agreement on...
What it is.
On the project.
Yes, what we all thought.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Are we good on that? And at nine thousand?
Yeah, they're back in.
Okay.
Yep. It's now in there, so, okay.
Any other council questions, input?
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Just bugging me, I, and we went through all this process, and I cannot remember e-ticketing, and what specifically? Okay, yeah, e-ticketing is, uh, it was in the current year budget, uh, that's ending three thirty-one of twenty twenty-one. Um, it is basically hardware and software that allows the, uh, police officers to, uh, write an electronic ticketing, ticket, that will automatically go into the system, the court system and all of that. So, it replaces basically the paper ticket that they write, and then somebody else has to enter that. So, it, it, uh, basically streamlines the process, makes it more automated, it goes into a, a uniform system that, uh, that the courts use. So, it, it's basically, anything else I left out there, Chief?
Not only is it part about making electronic tickets or some system or ticket, it's going through that process, and it allows, uh, like, to be, it allows that ticket to go through a record management system and be put into the shopping court system, which is what, uh, how our prosecutor and, uh, the court system was able to track that case, process that case.
Without, without, without staff having to interact.
Correct, but at the end of the day, it's only input in one time, as opposed to every step along the line.
Yeah.
That's the, that's the, a lot of what we save is the labor and time.
And then the prosecutor can electronically, uh, go into the system and basically sign the ticket electronically, and so that it, you know, it, uh, from the officer on, nobody really has to touch anything.
Would, I kind of recall the discussion, now, Chief, as long as there's no cameras on, uh, no automatic cameras, so I don't want them catching giants running outside.
I got you on our cam.
I knew you were going to say that. Okay, thank you.
And, and I'm trying to understand this, right, but Chief, uh, we're trying to make this available through law enforcement, if we jump through all the hoops.
We've had that special going through with, they made to the, uh, transport system, where there's a, a bit of a learning curve in there, and we're working through that process, and, uh, so, uh, that is, that's the direction we're moving in, so that they can have access to it.
Thank you, sir.
Did you get any more information on the, uh, White Man, uh, Area Leadership Council, the housing study that they're doing, they're planning on doing?
Um, I don't know about more information. We did, uh, we had their, um, on their monthly board meeting, uh, and I did just indicate to them that, that, uh, this was in my budget recommendation. I told them, you know, basically, this claim is, you know, it still hasn't been adopted yet, that, uh, and they thanked us for at least even considering it, so, you know.
Any other questions? All right, would you read yours, please?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-five. An ordinance authorizing the adoption of a budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Second reading.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Close?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-five. An ordinance authorizing the adoption of a budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-two.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes.
All in favor?
Next item I have on the agenda is the, uh, an ordinance adopting our five-year capital improvement plan. I believe, Kelvin, you have a presentation on this?
Yes, sir. Um, I just passed out here, um, get the right one. I just passed out here, get the right one. Just passed out, I apologize if I didn't get this pulled together quickly enough to get it into the packet so that you all would have a chance to study it. But basically, what this plan does is it takes what's in our 2022 budget for the capital improvements. And then it also prioritizes the items that were listed on the council strategic plan. And I've laid those out over the next five years of what kind of a plan for how we can get to some of those. So, you know, again, I apologize for not getting it out to you. Down at the bottom of the capital improvement plan, it shows you the funding sources so that it shows that, how this could all work. You know, that we could, through this plan, basically, pay for each one of those capital items that are scheduled out. Also, one of the things that's part of our personnel, our financial management policies, which will come up here in just a minute for adoption, is as we talk about our debt service management. And so the debt schedules prove out, you know, what those ratios are and how we're doing along those items. It will show that we are, in the next few years, we're going to be under what our targets were for debt management. That's really because of the significant debt we took on for the community center. But as it'll show, as we go through the next few years, we'll get back within the ratio targets that we've gotten. I don't want to be alarmist because we are still in good shape. Those ratios are really good, and we set them really aggressively, our targets, to not let the city get underwater on debt. Be happy to entertain any questions, or if we want to go through any of those items.
I had some questions about the community center and its debt service. But it's, it's in, it's not actually, if I understand, when we went through the amortization tables a year or two ago, that debt service, we, as a city, really plan on using capital improvements later, farther out than five years. But we've got to make sure, and we've got that community center in this debt service.
Yes, yes. If you go back to the debt service schedules, it's, the community center is showing, yeah, right here. And so right now, the 2021 ending balance is 23 million, nine forty-five. And then I also show the donor revenue, the amount coming through the Hecker Foundation, Sue's gift there, and then the school partnership on their other half of their portion. So it shows part of that funding, of course. The major portion of that, or major portion of the rest of it, is through the increase of the eight cent for the Parks and Rec.
Right.
And that's, we're good.
Yeah, that's fine.
We're extended out.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And then in the out years, there'll be some of those, some of those years that all of that won't cover it, so that it comes out of the CIT.
My recollection was nine years out or something like that.
But in that, well, yeah, there's two parts of Sue's gift of, there's two different foundations that it's coming out of. And basically, I think it's about nine years when that flips over to where her second foundation gift kicks in.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Kelvin, Your Honor, just a quick question here. Is this a living document?
Yes.
It can be subject to review?
Yes.
You know, we're sitting at the end of this year, we're supposed to have our comprehensive plan come into play. And just a quick glance through here, and I maybe have missed it. We have stormwater, but I see nothing in here in regards to the actual water.
Yeah, this is our tax-based government funds. The enterprise funds are not on here, except for the debt, the debt is on here. Thank you. Yes, and thank you for pointing that out. This is a living and breathing document. It doesn't commit us to anything, it's just a way for us to plan out and take a look at that longer-term planning. You know, each year, you know, yes, we're asking you to adopt this as a five-year plan, but it doesn't authorize any spending. The spending actually gets only appropriated in the budget. So this is merely the planning document.
Marley?
Thank you.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-six, an ordinance adopting a five-year capital improvement plan.
Second reading.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
opposed?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-six, an ordinance adopting a five-year capital improvement plan.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call please.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
And Lehman?
Yes.
All in favor.
Next item I have is the adoption, an ordinance adopting the financial management policies. Included in the substantial changes to those policies are the authorizing of staff to execute contracts under $10,000, I believe.
Council discussion? Marley, ready orders, please?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-seven, an ordinance adopting revised financial management policies and repealing ordinance number 10886.
Second reading.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
opposed?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-seven, an ordinance adopting revised financial management policies and repealing ordinance number 10886.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call please.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
All in favor.
The next item I have is an ordinance authorizing an agreement between the City of Sedalia and the Economic Development of Sedalia Pettis County. It's in the amount of $135,000.
Any council discussion? Are they ready orders, please?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-eight, an ordinance authorizing an agreement binding between the City of Sedalia, Missouri and Economic Development of Sedalia Pettis County.
Second reading.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
opposed?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-eight, an ordinance authorizing an agreement binding between the City of Sedalia, Missouri and Economic Development of Sedalia Pettis County.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call please.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
And Dawson?
Yes.
All in favor.
Seventh item I have on the agenda is an ordinance authorizing an agreement between the City of Sedalia and the Whitman Area Leadership Council in the amount of $3,000 for economic development representation on that leadership council.
Any council discussion? Are they ready orders, please?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-nine, an ordinance authorizing an agreement binding between the City of Sedalia, Missouri and Whitman Area Leadership Council.
Second reading.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash thirty-nine, an ordinance authorizing an agreement binding between the City of Sedalia, Missouri and Whitman Area Leadership Council.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call please.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
And Bogus?
Yes.
All in favor.
Our eighth item is an ordinance authorizing an agreement between the City of Sedalia and Oats Incorporated. It's in the amount of $25,000. It's a three-year agreement for their services here within the City of Sedalia.
Any council discussion? Are they ready orders?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash forty, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for services binding between the City of Sedalia, Missouri and Oats Incorporated.
Second reading.
Second.
On paper? opposed?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash forty, an ordinance authorizing an agreement for services binding between the City of Sedalia, Missouri and Oats Incorporated.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call please.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
All in favor.
The ninth item I have is a ordinance amending the code of ordinances in relation to mobile food vendors. To the pleases, Your Honor, I'd ask that Kelvin or Administrator Shaw take us through this, then we have council discussion, and then possibly hear before we vote on it from anyone in the audience.
Okay, this really arose from when we talked about the taco truck there on Thompson Avenue. I think it's Thompson Avenue or Thompson Boulevard.
Thompson Road.
Thompson Road, yeah. There's too many Thompsons there. But anyway, this really come up, and as we were discussing that and looking through it, really, as we looked at our code, we really didn't fit mobile food trucks into our code very nicely anywhere. And so with Labber's help, we were able to kind of look at what some other communities are doing and how they're handling it. And as their recommendation was a good one, that essentially, we just create a whole nother division within our licensing code that really specifically lays out how we handle mobile food vendors. To include defining them, and then, you know, what the operation should be, you know, with the operational hours now. What I've done is worked with them again and Dawn, and we kind of laid out what we think or what we recommend as far as operational standards, how we define them and those kinds of things. Reviewed that with the mayor a little bit, we've made some changes there. So what you have there in your packet is our recommendation of a separate division within the code for how we handle licensing. Joe, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, or, you know, one of the things I think that we were concerned about was, you know, when we were looking, when we were discussing this, is, you know, how would we say yes or no to specific different things? And so from a legal standpoint, we need to make sure that we're not arbitrary in our decision. And so that was part of the reasoning for laying this out. Also, as Dawn and I talked, it makes their job a whole lot easier to have this better defined and those kinds of things, so.
And I might just add, I think in working with Dawn and with Mr. Shaw as well, you know, one of the things, this is a lot of information in an ordinance, and this is really kind of the first time you're seeing it other than the packet. And we wanted to give you the opportunity that if you liked what you saw, you had the ability to adopt it this evening. But if there are things that you would like to see different, you have questions, things like that, we can work with you and get this fine tuned to the way you want it and bring back another version. But we wanted to give you the option to do either tonight, if you have an opportunity to look at it.
And to that point, I'm sorry, I forgot your last name, Juan.
I got it.
Okay, thank you. They're here in, you know, the mayor and Councilman Oldham worked with to get them basically temporary quarters, and that's due to expire. So normally, what we would do is, as Joe mentioned, we would normally give this to you in a work session, talk about it, and then come back with a later ordinance. In order to keep him going, we wanted to give you the opportunity. If you're happy with this ordinance, then we can go forward with it.
Council, any other questions?
If you haven't tried his tacos, they are super good. They are good.
How much did he pay for them?
Yeah.
He was?
How much did he pay for them?
They're reasonable.
Your Honor, call for the ordinance.
Are they ready, listen?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash forty-one, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances to add Division Nine Mobile Food Vendors to Chapter Twelve, Article H.
Second reading.
Second.
On paper? opposed?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash forty-one, an ordinance amending the code of ordinances to add Division Nine Mobile Food Vendors to Chapter Twelve, Article Two.
Final passage.
Second.
Roll call please.
Foster?
Yes.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
And Cross?
Yes.
All in favor.
That's all I have, Your Honor.
Andrew, thank you. Get married and pay for the presentation.
Taco's all over on next week.
Beth, please.
Your Honor, I have three items this evening. First of all, has to do with establishing no parking area on the south side of East Seventh Street from South Marvin to South Summit. It was discussed, and if you all read the minutes of the Traffic Advisory Commission from February tenth, they deliberated over this and decided to establish a no parking on one side of East Seventh Street from South Marvin to South Summit Streets. That street is too narrow to effectively have parking on both sides of this road and still allow for traffic, especially for fire trucks and other emergency vehicles having to navigate through there safely. The commission itself voted five to nothing to recommend this, and are asking for approval from the council for this ordinance.
Any council discussion?
Yes, I'm very glad to see this brought up because when I first got on the city council, I had complaints about that, those two blocks. And I went over and measured between two cars, and there was no way that a fire truck could get down through there. And so nothing was ever brought up front again, so that's really important. Like I said, there was no room for a fire truck to go down through those two cars. So this is a very good ordinance there.
Any other questions? Marley, ready orders, please?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash forty-two, an ordinance authorizing a no parking sign on the south side of East Seventh Street from Marvin to Summit.
Second reading.
Second.
On paper?
Aye.
opposed?
Bill number twenty twenty-one dash forty-two, an ordinance authorizing a no parking sign on the south side of East Seventh Street from Marvin to Summit.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call please.
Bliss?
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Oldham?
Yes.
Dawson?
Yes.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
All in favor.
The next item I have has to do with the rail spur change order in regards to our work that's being done by Capital Railroad Contracting in the amount of $14,223.63. During the construction, it's been discovered that the design derailment would not allow for proper clearance. The engineers and the contractor worked together to develop a coordinated design and obtain the necessary approval. To further avoid delays in the construction, as you all have noticed, it's really coming along pretty good. The staff gave them verbal approval to do this change, and the staff- The staff gave them verbal approval to do this change, and the staff has recommended to us to do approve that, since they've already done it, to the tune of $14,223 and 66 cents that would be amended to the contract with Capital Railroad Contracting for the installation. I do myself have one question in regards to that. Some of the fault to me seems to be in the design mode, which would have been the engineers and not necessarily our fault. So is there a recovery from that possibility?
Yeah, Brenda and I have discussed that, and she's pushing back with the engineers and asking them to step up to the plate here to, you know, at least give us recognition for design going forward. We still have the transload facility design and those kinds of things. So we need to get it out of them sometime.
In the overall picture, this is small, but it's still the point.
But yeah, it's an excellent point. I mean, it's, you know, we pay these folks to design it and, you know, of course, unfortunately, it went through several approval processes and nobody caught it, but, you know, that still doesn't excuse the original design for the expert that we paid to design it, so. Brenda, why are you being so shy tonight?
I'm being cute for a change.
Any other questions, counsel?
Thank you.
Ready to order, please? Our ladies?
Bill number 2021-43, an ordinance authorizing change order number two for additional labor and material costs related to the rail spur.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor? opposed?
Bill number 2021-43, an ordinance authorizing change order number two for additional labor and material costs related to the rail spur.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call please.
Lehman.
Yes.
Oldham.
Yes.
Dawson.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
And Bliss.
Yes.
All in favor?
My last item has to do with the airport and office space lease out there. I'd first like to give, I noticed that our airport manager is here tonight. He needs a kind of a, what do we want to say, an attaboy for what's going on out there. You know, we purchased that hangar from the Pro Energy, and we've managed to put full planes in it now for storage to recover some of the cost, along with we were able to sell gasoline to these people that come into that and do maintenance out of that building. We also moved our terminal down to a nicer place, which has a conference room, a real nice lounge. It's a first-class operation. Well, he's on his road again, or I guess you'd say maybe on his horse again, and he's managed to rent out the old terminal, and that's what we're here for in this cost right now, is to approve that contract. So the rental is set at $700 per month for the old terminal for a minimum term of six months and can convert to a month-to-month agreement. So we're on our way to recovering cost and even offer better things to our citizens than those that fly into our area. Thank you, Derek. Good night.
Counsel, court case. Read your ordinance, please, our ladies.
Bill number 2021-44, an ordinance authorizing office space located at the Sedalia Regional Airport eligible for leased.
Second reading.
Second. All in favor? opposed?
Bill number 2021-44, an ordinance authorizing office space located at the Sedalia Regional Airport eligible for leased.
Final passage.
Second. Roll call please.
Oldham.
Yes.
Dawson.
Yes.
Bogus.
Yes.
Richardson.
Yes.
Cross.
Yes.
Foster.
Yes.
Bliss.
Yes.
And Lehman.
Yes.
All in favor?
Your honor, that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you. Counsel?
I don't have anything to report, your honor.
Anything, Chris? Nothing to do, just committed development.
He had it all under financing and management.
So liquor licenses. I'll do appointments first, I'm sorry.
Right.
Since Joe is here, we can officially appoint Joe.
Okay, we have two separate ones. The first one to members of city council from Mayor John Cady. I would like to appoint Lauber Municipal Law LLC as city attorney and prosecutor with Joe Lauber as city attorney and Jeremy Covert as prosecutor.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
The second one is to members of city council from Mayor John Cady. New appointments and reappointments to 1705 Broadway Community Improvement District. New appointment is Jacob Wilson, four-year term, 21319 to 21323. And the reappointments are Lisa Pisier, four-year term, 21319 to 21323. Brian Potaba, four-year term, 21319 to 21323. And the remaining, Chris Williams, Ashley Williams, and Kelvin Shaw, non-voting city rep. Those are four-year terms from 21321 to 21325.
Motion to approve and block.
Second.
All in favor? Opposed? Liquor licenses?
We have two new liquor licenses this evening. Christie Long Doing Businesses Wildlife Bridge Winery, 34751 Miller Road, Smithville, Missouri, for Sedalia Chamber Awards banquet at the venue on March 25th, 2021. It's a temporary event license. And Erica Eisenmenger Doing Businesses Ivory Grill LLC, 501 South Ohio Suite 200, for a sidewalk liquor consumption license.
Motion to approve and block.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And I just, as the mayor, I want to thank, we've had some very successful vaccine clinics on the playgrounds, and I have been kind of responsible for getting food to feed the volunteers, and they had great support. And I want to thank the city council members' support. We've had National Guard get in, the volunteer, and that's like, and then I had the coffee group at the Country Kitchen, they did the same thing. I had, uh, Prude Churps, did it. Connie McGlotten also did it, Steve Bliss and myself. And probably next week, I'll see more people be involved. But it's been very successful. Probably been the biggest single tourism event we've had this year, because these people have been coming today from all over the area, and they make a day of it. And they feel good about getting the vaccine, and they go out and have a little fun.
I got one when you're done.
Are you done?
I've got, you give them all there? Uh, I've got thank you cards for people that put up, uh, white ribbons. And I think I'll, at the next meeting, just, is it okay? I don't want to do anything I'm not supposed to do, but just bring a stack, and I would hope all the council would sign those, and then I'll get them in the mail.
Sure.
Or leave them at John's office. At some point in time, before the first of April, I'd like to get, or near the first of April, near our next meeting, I guess, I'd like to get some thank you cards in the mail for the people that helped us.
Anybody else?
And if anybody, and if anyone has someone, you know, I'll have a list of it. I've got 10 or 12 that I can think of that really went all out and put some things up. I think everybody in Sedalia would understand, we can't probably thank an individual who put a white ribbon up, but I know, for instance, the people that have the app that were signed at Thompson and Broadway gave us that free display for quite some period of time. There's a bunch of people like that. So if any of you have someone too, make sure you get that address, that mail address, and we'll get them a thank you card.
Mayor, I'm working with the Park Department. On the 100th birthday of Hubbard Park, which is going to be happening the first Saturday in August, which is the 7th, we're putting a lot of good stuff together, and I'd like to put it out into the community. If you know of an individual that does, I guess you can call it balloon animal, you know how to do that, please get in touch with me and let me know, because that's one entity that we want to put on there. The other thing is that we're doing a barbecue contest, so if you want to be in on the barbecue contest on that day, get in touch with me as well. I know you.
No, 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 no professionals allowed.
No professionals allowed, yeah. So those two items is what I'm asking from the community.
All you do is go rock, rock and schmuck. I'm telling you, Hubbard Park is going to be quite the perk.
It's going to be quite the park. Amy informed me that she had between eight to 10 bounce houses that she's going to be putting up out there on that day. We've contacted different vendors that's going to be there, Kona Ice, different ones that's going to be out there that day. It's going to be from 11 o'clock in the morning, and we're going to shut it down at seven. Some of the musicians that used to be here are well-known on the north side of town. Melvin Kerr for the music, gospel music, and Arthur Seaberry for the rock and roll blues, whatever.
Is Fisher fall over six?
You know, if I ask him, we'll never get out of there at seven o'clock. I'll say.
Make sure he brings you some wine, he comes.
Thank you.
I like to recognize that scouts are coming in tonight and learning how the city government's run. And I don't guess we call it board scouts anymore, can we? It's scouting. Thanks for coming in, guys.
Now, Ann Richardson, and, come on up here. Yeah, come up here.
You might have to pull the mic down.
Yes. Could you get me up to the stool, Jeff?
Sure.
My name's Ann Richardson. I feel like I can't talk through a mask, but I'm here tonight to present the mayor with a book that four of us wrote about the history of First United Methodist Church, where it burned at Fourth and Osage. And it's called "In the Footsteps of the Saints." And I wanted to tell you, the authors, they are Rhonda Chalfont, Rebecca Einhauser, Becky Reed, and myself. So we want to make the presentation to the mayor tonight.
Thank you.
And we have two books here. One goes to John Simmons. Thank you. Sure. Enjoy.
It broke my heart from that.
Yes, yes.
Mayor, you might read immediately.
Anybody else? Come on up. There's a lady on the other end. Go ahead. Bliss?
Thank you. Say your name and address, please.
You bet. Is this on? My name is Bo Williams. First of all, I had that all written down, so I'm not real good at this, so bear with me. Oh, Williams, I represent the 48th, Sussman Blind, Commander, and Dare. Parents supporting wars, post 2591, James Coop, commander. American Legion post 642, James Stewart, commander. And the veterans and first responders of our community, and also those who will never be able to come here, or those who are paralyzed and need special arrangements to get here. I am here to formally request the renaming of Gazebo Park, located at Ohio Osage. Change name to Valor Park, commemorating the memory and sacrifice of veterans and first responders of Sedalia and the surrounding community. Number two, creation by the city of an exploratory committee with representation by the above mentioned veterans organizations included on said committee, committed to the development of said Valor Park for use by the city and associated service organizations of the community. This request is being made for the following benefits of the Sedalia community. Number one, a common site for recognition of the service and sacrifices of veterans and first responders, past, present, and for the future. A common site where all services are given memorance and respect at the same venue. A common site, number two, a common site that can be utilized by the city and service organizations for events that would regularly create revenues to enhance or improve the quality of the community. Number three, a virtual design exists of this property, cost of which has been incurred by the taxpayers for approximately $35,000. Said design includes a pavilion with stage, restrooms, and a stamp bar, as well as basic landscape escaping. Therefore, this idea has been explored previously. Number four, cost of development is realistic, approximately $800,000, compared to other disbursements that the city has made and acquisitions that the city has approved. Number five, benefit to the downtown Sedalia and the community, especially the north end of South Ohio, is a win-win opportunity. We've been asking for this for a long time. It's one of the reasons Ozark Coffee moved down to the south end. It's all about increasing city revenues and the property values. I stand here proudly, representing all that I've said. I talked to a number of you individuals individually, and tried to solicit your feedback and your This is just, I guess, the first step that we as veterans, and speaking for so many, that we are able to come before you and start this process. So with that being said, I'd be willing to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. White. Thank you for your time. Next, please. Please say your name and address.
My name's Kyle Edwards. I just wanted to back up my brother Bo.
Your address.
Right. 401. All right. One of the things I just wanted to say about this is people see the $800,000 of cost on this project and think this is a lot of money for our town. You can do this in phases, just simply renaming it, doesn't cost much. And from there, it opens up the doors to nonprofits, grants, and other funds that he's already in the works on and I have connections with as well, to help with trying to get funding to get this going. Could do it into another phase where it would just be just the pavilion, no bathrooms and all the excess and that, so forgetting all the utilities and that type of work that would go into it. And get funding for that, to at least get a covered area. You can even do farmer's market downtown again, or here, and other events. And then working, adding even fundraise up to go to the full stage, the full plan. One of my concerns about this downtown area is the green space and in urbanization studies and urban heat island effects. I think that renaming this Valor Park alone would help with the longevity of keeping that a green space, because people would be less tendency to want to bulldoze that. Green parks help for a lot of things for downtown, keeping the temperatures down, radiation, permeation of water into our soils, the green landscape, it's just carbon dioxide, everything. The, he's exactly right about the community multiplier could be helping that, or the north downtown area. I'm sure you can look at any small town that's done a nice pavilion like this, park, and you can watch in the five years next to it, how much business growth will happen to those and people buying those buildings up and renting them and renovation. I think we need more green downtown or less concrete. We don't need more concrete downtown. We have a trouble finding all, to fill all these parking spots as it is. It'd be right by the DFW, they need some help. They're really hurting. alone would help with the longevity of keeping that a green space because people would be less tendency to want to bulldoze that. Um, green parks help for a lot of things for downtown, um, keeping the temperatures down, radiation, permeation of water into our soils, the green landscape, it's just, um, carbon dioxide, ev- everything. Um, the, he, he's exactly right about the community multiplier could be helping that norther- or the, uh, north downtown area. Um, I'm sure you can look at any small town that's done a nice pavilion like this, park, and you can watch in the five years next to it, how much business growth will happen to those and people buying those buildings up and renting them and renovation. Um, I think we need more green downtown or less concrete. We don't need more concrete downtown. We have a trouble finding all, to fill all these parking spots as it is. Um, it'd be right by the VFW, they need some help, uh, they're really hurting. Um, they can do, uh, and there's a number of things you can do. And you mentioned the barbecue competition could also be held there as, as well in future or secondary one, um, just to bring some more downtown, defeat organizations doing stuff down there. The VFW would like to possibly do a legitimate Oktoberfest there. I know Gold Camp's had one for a while that moved it to winery. It's not as good anymore. How many people at White Mountain Air Force Base and veterans here have served over at Lanzhou Air Force Base in Germany and would love to come to see an actual Oktoberfest? The VFW commander's wife is from Germany and can facilitate that. Um, VFW could do fish fries and barbecues on sometimes for, for fundraisers or anyone else in, in this, it'll be under city control, obviously. Keep it under city control and not put it in parks work to keep it into being able to have a, uh, downtown area where people who live downtown even can have a place with barbecue grills on it, to even have an adult beverage with their friends in, in a green space area, which you don't really have that downtown. Um, the, yeah, that, that's about all I've got.
Thank you, doctor, man. Come on up.
Good evening. Thank you, guys, all for your service, first of all. I know it can't be easy doing this. Um, I have been in contact with my councilman, he knows about this.
Your name is, I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, I didn't tell you, did I? My name is Melissa Turner. I reside at five seventeen West Sixth, and I am going to tell you about a property in my neighborhood. The property's address is four zero eight West Sixth, okay? Now, my daughters live in the property next to it. Now, I'm going to tell you, I make a joke out of everything. And sometimes my neighborhood is better than cable. And that was what would happen last week. My daughters were outside cleaning up their yard and the landlord next to them came and was talking, wasn't really being nice, was speaking to them. Now, let me tell you about the history of this property. In the years that my daughters have been there, they've been there for three years, okay? First of all, my daughter Laura, her dog got attacked and we're thinking it was by a dog that resided at the house next door. Laura's dog had to have surgery. My dog was attacked by people's animals that lived there. I was not a happy camper, okay? Um, one time, this sounds like we live in Mayberry, we were outside in their backyard making s'mores and we could hear other residents that live there. They were coming out the back door and they were calling each other everything but a nice person and said they was going to kill each other over a phone. Okay, phones are sensitive, I get that. It's a phone, okay? Let's see, oh, um, the last one was a, a man and his significant other that lived in the house. And for a while, they had electricity and water and then they didn't. And they lived in this house without electricity and water for over a year with chickens. Yeah. And then they had a chicken named Buddy that wore diapers. I ain't even going there on that one. Anyway, I told you it was better than cable, honey. Anyway, so last week, Chelsea was out in her yard and she was cleaning her yard and the landlady was talking to her. And every time something happens, we call the police and they, you know, they're there, lickety-split, they're good people. The land, now, understand Chelsea told me this, so I'm getting it secondhand, but the landlady said, if you don't quit calling the police on me, I'm going to have worse people in here. Now, I'm asking you all, first of all, I thought it was funny, ah, my neighborhood is better than cable. Then I got mad. That's an applied threat, guys. Now, put yourselves in my shoes. How would you feel if your daughters heard this from the person who's supposed to own this land next to you? I'm going to ask you another question. Okay, so we've had people that have said, I'm going to kill you over a phone. We've had chickens and diapers, we've had all kinds of things. What's next? Are we going to have a convicted rapist? Are we going to have a murderer? What's next? So, I want to tell you guys, I would really appreciate it somehow if this property was put in better hands, something was happening to it, I don't know. But I would very much appreciate your help on finding better neighbors, better renters, whatever. Okay, now, yes, I chose to live in this neighborhood. I chose to put my roots down here. I love seeing this place bloom and it is blooming, especially with the green space and everything back there, love it. But we, as people in this neighborhood, cannot bloom, cannot put down roots with this kind of fertilizer around. So, please help me make, help us make our neighborhood better. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Now, I just wanted to let you know that we're very conscious of this issue. Uh, as a matter of fact, this particular incident was my former neighbor. Everything he's saying about this is true, is very difficult. Uh, I know Andrew and I have been dealing with it. I know both persons have been dealing with it. It's currently in the house is in a gorged up situation. It shouldn't be occupied because no water, electricity. We're, we're, we're being very aggressive. Please, please as well. Listen, sir. We've got, we've got a record voice for.
I know. Been what, like nine months since I've been here?
I'm in fact.
I am, after five years of attending almost every meeting and sitting in on the virtual ones, the last, what, eight, nine months now, in a minute? But, um, listening to the green space. Oh, I'm sorry, my name is Robin Bocky. I reside at six forty-five State Federal Hours.
The outside world doesn't.
Yes. Um, if the council agrees to have a committee look into the possibilities of what they're wanting to do, I'm offering myself as a volunteer, um, um, a community person to help serve on it. I think that was one of the people you talked about, the city, city committee, that I would be willing to help with that because I think it's important to at least explore the options. And if just renaming it is going to help them get funding through grants, I can't see the harm in doing that. And I'm not going to speak for them, but I'm pretty sure I know somebody that's good with grant writing and might be able to give me a hand with that, so.
Thank you, officer.
Okay.
Anybody else? Please state your name.
My name is Juan Linares and, uh.
What's your name?
Juan, Juan Linares. It's in, uh, Maria. We are the owners of, uh, Tacos Al Arca. And I have met some, some people, uh, of the council. And, uh, I thank, I thank you all and I thank the city. And, uh, I, I saw the news, uh, a friend sent me the news and I posted it on Facebook and I, I, we got a lot of messages and, uh, and, uh, I thank all the city. I thank all the city and, and all of you. And, uh, thank you for all your support. Thank you for all your help. And, uh, like you said, uh, if you haven't tried them, the tacos. Like you said.
I'll tell you, uh, Councilman Oldham, he took a petition day and, and solved that problem.
Yes, yes, I met him that day and, uh, thank, thank you, Tom, and thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Bob, I met him. And Steve, he was there. And thank you, thank you all, and thank all the city and, and thank you, thank you all.
You're welcome. Be sure and go try these out. They are the best. Better, better get a bigger truck. Anyone else?
Ian Nomar, I motion to close, move to closed-door session.
Roll call, please.
Lehman? Still here?
I don't think we need a roll call to join the closed, do we?
Roll call in, roll call out. I'm beginning to see the, uh, actual reason to count, which in this case is subsection one, legal advice and subsection, I'm sorry, it is just real estate, is correct?
Legal advice and real estate?
Yeah, legal and real estate is how we.
Okay, so subsection one, legal advice and subsection two, real estate.
Okay, uh, Oldham?
Here.
Dawson?
Here.
Bogus?
Yes.
Richardson?
Yes.
Cross?
Yes.
Foster?
Yes.
And Bliss?
Yes, here.
Can we get, how do we get, if we go upstairs? I don't see you got access.
Yeah, uh. Councilwoman Foster, do you have access to email? I can send you a link for the.
Everybody here can say if they'd like.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll shoot it to you here real quick.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much.